Hello everyone, welcome to this evening's study session. We appreciate your attendance. We'll be discussing capital budgets, capital projects, and discussing capital needs moving forward in the future, in the near future. So I'll now turn it over to Dr. Reed.
Thank you, President Swain, and we do have time to really sort of complete our conversation that we began in our retreat in January around some of our capital planning and ballot measure conversations. So it's my pleasure to introduce our Director of Capital Projects, Drew Ralph, and she's got a person with her, she can introduce her team, and they'll be kind of doing a quick refresh of what we began in January, and then really be responsive to questions you as a board have. And we'll facilitate that conversation this evening. Thank you. Drew?
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Shervon, I'm planning to share a PowerPoint. Let me do that now. All right, are you all seeing this PowerPoint that looks remarkably familiar from the 25th of January? I'm not, just by way of introduction, I have with me Ashley McLaren, she's from OAC Services, and she has been working to prepare and partly author our facility master plan that we've been working to put together for the last year. I did not update this slideshow from when you saw it in January, so tonight I'm planning to only discuss the pieces that have changed or that there's new information. So if you want to stop at any one slide, please feel free to unmute yourself and ask me to stop. Otherwise, I'm gonna power through this so that we can really have the discussion piece. So we start with a little more. This is the overview of the presentation. Really, the piece that I'll talk most about is the Bond Planning Task Force. There's been some changes since I talked to you last time. These are our completed projects from last year with the capital bond funds from 2018. They have not changed since we spoke in January. These are upcoming projects for this year, and you can see that there's a transition from growth projects to our district-wide projects, which are smaller in scope but require a larger logistical lift because we're touching every campus and most of the projects. So this is where the big change comes from the last time we met. We had yet to advertise for our Bond Planning Task Force when we spoke. So this slide really reflects what was done in prior Bond Planning Task Force forces. We opened up the process for applications, and we quickly realized that we were gonna need to change our direction quite a bit. We had over 70 applications, seven zero, applications for the Bond Planning Task Force. And as I looked through the applications, they were very good. It included 12 students, at least one from each of our comprehensive high schools. And as I was thinking and talking with Dr. Reed about how to possibly narrow that down, she encouraged me to think bigger. So we decided to accept all of the applicants and come up with an alternative process that would allow everyone to participate. And this is really where Ashley and OAC have done a lot, a lot, a lot of work since we last talked. They have started helping, helped us start to use the software Moreau, which is a huge whiteboard that lets everyone participate at one time. And it has been a very new mindset for everyone on the committee about how to get the same information through that quantity of people, make sure that everyone feels like they are, not only feels, but are actually participating in the process in a meaningful way. So we're working a lot in small groups that we're trying to keep consistent so that a community can be built through the process. And it's been an adventure so far. With that, we updated the number of other NSD staff that we're having participate. So we have five instructional building admins, which is similar to the number we've had before. But we also have 12 other staff members, whether they're from technology or racial and educational justice or early learning, all part of the process so that when we break into small groups, we can have a North Shore person participating in each of the groups. And the other change has been we started a week early. So we started in March 1st, and so we've had one meeting. And I'm really happy to report that it was overwhelmingly successful. We still have some bugs that we're working out, but as you saw, these 70 people's cursors moving through our whiteboard and typing in Post-it notes and really starting to interact with each other, it was really fun to see. So that's the one change on this slide. The school board action remains the same for us currently, although we're coordinating with the other levy groups. And we'll be back in front of you on the 22nd during your retreat to make sure that our coordination with you is the same as with the levies so that we're kind of maximizing your time.
Drew, sorry, quick question. I'm just putting all this together. You had your first meeting there. Did you say there's 70 people on this committee?
Yes.
How, I've been to some Zoom events. How did that work with 70 people zooming?
It worked great.
Okay.
So we had two activities that we had everyone participate in, and partly it was to get people familiar with the new software tools. So instead of people going around and introducing themselves, which if everyone took one minute, that would be almost an hour of our two-hour time. So we had people put a dot, move a dot to where they were on their map, and we broke it down into groups of people. So we started with our students feeling like they would be the most technologically savvy, and of course they were. So they quickly moved their dots to their school, and then they would unmute themselves and just say their name, their school, a quick one-sentence introduction. So we went through that with almost everyone who was on the call at the time. We did have some attrition. I would say we had about 80 people total. So there were some folks who didn't make it to our first meeting, but we had several others who've been participating on the whiteboards during not meeting times, so they're getting up to speed. And then we also, as part of the whiteboard, we have a space where each participant can put some pictures of themselves, things that they're interested in. We have three questions that we're asking them. What's your favorite public building? What's, how long can you sit in a Zoom conference without a break? And then what's your favorite school memory and a picture associated with that? So that's a way in the smaller groups, they can go back to those and kind of get to know each other in that way. So again, we're thinking macro and micro all the time in this process now. Thank you for that question. So our facility master plan really looks at these three areas that you saw last time, looking at our growth and building capacity, looking at how the schools are functioning, and then looking at the school's conditions.
Drew, can I stop you for just a moment? And I apologize, on the previous slide, under the box for key dates, and I apologize, I wasn't really present when you were all were going through this the last time. I have to assume that there's a corresponding Snohomish County deadline, and that this ballot also goes to the Snohomish County voters?
Correct.
Okay.
That is something I should add to that slide.
Thank you.
All right. And then you all saw this, which is one of the things that we shared with our task force last time that really definitely sticks into people's minds. I think we've heard a little bit about this today. And certainly, this is not the only criteria that we're looking at, but when we're looking at how buildings perform over time, older buildings need more work generally and are harder to maintain. So this is that triangle or the delta that we really are paying a lot of attention to. These are, we're calling them our all-in-ones, which has information about each school that we'll share with the Bond Task Force.
So I'm sorry, I'm just gonna ask questions. So I'm gonna push back a little bit on that 30-year lifespan, because certainly, again, as a taxpayer, you know, my parents' house is 45 years old, and it does not need to be completely gutted and started over again. And so can you provide a little more clarity on what that means, that 30-year lifespan, and why, why you're using that metrics?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Ashley jump in, just so you don't have to hear me the whole time, and she has this one down pat.
Sure. So OSPI uses the 30-year guideline as a means to not only help you understand, it really is, in the beginning of a design process, is to help you understand what the maximum or what the minimum expectation is from them. So if you, especially if you're using SCAP funds, they're expecting your building to last 30 years. So it starts off at the beginning to kind of help you. What they don't want you is to do, what they don't want districts to do is to spend kind of good money after bad, right? So they want to make sure that you're designing buildings to a standard that they have set statewide. What happens here, and what I think is the important, the most important takeaway from all of this, is that North Shore is a good steward of their tax dollars, right? So what's happening here that you're not seeing are the constant building improvements that are going on with each bond cycle. So this is really just talking about the overall life of a building if you are just doing the basic maintenance and operations. And the second key component of this is that if you invest those dollars, your building will last 30 years. However, the impact of those dollars reduces as the 30 years, as you move closer and closer, and then beyond 30 years. So those systems become obsolete. So now it's not a matter of maintaining the existing building. You're replacing systems to the degree, because those, even just the components, the parts and pieces aren't available anymore. So now, as you'll see with your ESCO projects, for instance, that you had in this last bond cycle, you're replacing the entire HVAC system. So that is almost, that's a one component of a building that you are making so new that it's basically adding life to that 30 years. And so this is just one graph or one timetable, timeline in a series of many. There's many components to the facilities master plan, and this should not be seen as a, oh, look, we have this many buildings that we need to replace. It's helping us understand what components, what buildings we need to focus new systems and components on, not replacing buildings as a whole entity. Does that make sense?
It does. And so let me, I want to, again, so that I'm able to communicate this, I want to make sure I understand. So it, the 30-year timeline kind of has a couple of purposes. One is to encourage districts, as you are building a building, to plan that it's gonna last at least 30 years. And so that you're using materials and products that are designed to last that long. The other is, it doesn't require that you then replace everything at 30 years, but that seems to be the general timeframe at which, if you're still, if you're just replacing things, the cost-benefit analysis, if you will, gets to the point where you're gonna spend more money than just kind of starting over again. Did I get that right?
Exactly. And that's actually a really interesting point, because whenever you start to see some of the older buildings, and you start to see where you have to start to replace a whole system, you start to have to replace multiple whole systems. And so you want to look at the value of the building in relationship to the amount of money that you're spending to replace those systems. And so this is really, again, a guideline to help you whittle down, along with a number of other data points, just to help you give, get direction on where you should go with this bond or next, or your next bonds. It's really just one point of analysis.
Great, thank you. That helps a lot. When we're thinking, I think you used the acronym SCAP, and we love acronyms in education. Could you explain what that is?
So that's the state funding component. So for instance, if, once your buildings have reached a certain, there's a series of criteria that the state will looks forward, or looks to, to help determine if your building is SCAP eligible. So state fund, state, eligible for state funding. So for instance, Inglemoor's Concert Hall does have a small component of its funding that is state-funded, because it's eligible based on it's the age of the building, but also it has to be a growth project as well, has to be adding educational spaces. There's a series of components there.
Okay, I threw you a softball, so.
No, sorry.
That's okay. SCAP stands for School Construction Assistance Plan, just FYI. And it doesn't fully fund, it is a matching program, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. All right. Sorry about that. I was trying to make it as general as possible. I didn't realize you actually knew the answer, so that's fine. Sorry about that.
No, no, it's good. It's, it's important that we recognize that not everybody watching knows all the acronyms. And so it's important that we take a minute and explain those things.
Even some of us in the meeting as well. Thank, thank you, Ashley. If I could just follow up with that, just really, really quickly, I just want to make sure that I understand it. I, you know, as I was looking through this previous slide, and then also thinking about the whole list that we just went through of all of the maintenance and other projects that are ongoing, that were funded by the last bond and levy. It made me wonder, and I think what you were saying is that the 30-year timeline is is what you get, what you should expect if you are doing all of those maintenance items and upgrading as they're needed. Then you can expect the building to be reasonably functional for 30 years, correct? And so then I'm assuming that all of those kind of build into some of your next slides to tell us how functional any given building is irrespective of its age.
That's right.
Is that right?
Correct.
I agree. Just if I could chime in, I mean, I know part of this comes from the old, you know, the commercial buildings are on a 39-year depreciation schedule, and residential's at 20-something, although we're not depreciating TAC for tax reasons. But the bigger thing is typically in on commercial real estate, you know, your roofs and your HVAC systems are kind of like 20 to 30-year lifespans, and those are usually your biggest costs to improve a building. So I'm guessing that's probably where OSPI comes up with 30 years, maybe from the past.
That, that's the general thinking, and there's, there are some districts that, that go, you, that's their minimum expectation. You can go beyond that, but that is their, that's their minimum guideline. So, but yes, it's, it's usually based on those major systems, the envelope systems and systems that keep students safe, dry, and warm.
Thank you.
So as we look at our 2020, so this is kind of our current facility condition assessment.
Excuse me, Drew, I hate to do this, but poor Director Kogan has been very patient. I know he has a question.
Please, I'm sorry.
Director Cass, thank you, Drew. Ashley, I had a question, just from your experience with other districts, looking at the graph behind that has kind of the 30-year dates and the various schools. I noticed that the ratio of the remodelizations, the major renovations disproportionately have been in middle schools and high schools in our district, which is the one elementary remodel up at Cottage Lake. So would you say that that speaks to, in general terms, just that the, the cost to maintain the buildings that have more students at the secondary levels or have more facilities like chemistry labs and hoods and things like that? Is that why those modernizations are happening more, or is that just a district choice that we made in the past?
There's actually, I mean, it's, it's hard to say, right? Each, each district will make different decisions based on their constituents. But middle schools or high schools and middle schools affect a larger percentage of the population of a district, if you think about feeder patterns. And so a lot of times, that is where districts will choose to spend bond dollars. Another thing, what you were talking about in terms of technology, that these, you know, buildings that affect older student populations, they, as technology changes and as educational models change, they start to make modernizations based on that. So for instance, if you think about what you were saying, science and technology, CTE programs, you'll see a large, you know, building additions, you know, to just capture new programs in a lot of instances. But I think if you, if you're thinking about how to capture the most interest in a district, a high school has many more students than an elementary school. And so a lot of times, that will be a deciding factor. But each, each district is a little different, and the decisions, the reasons for those decisions are a little different. It's hard to say.
Thank you.
Most popular slide. So as we look at our current facility condition assessment, this really points to that maintenance that we've done a really good job on over time. And when you look at some of the ages of these buildings and how they still score using the OSP guidelines for facilities' conditions. This one is our, by far, our most complicated map. And this looks at, you'll notice that this is talking about projected growth in 2030. So keep that in mind. And I'm gonna let Ashley walk through. But earlier today, I got a request for information about portables. And this is the graph that talks about portables. So Ashley, I'll let you walk them through this one.
Sure. So just to describe, just to outline the legend, again, it's a little complicated. So the interior shape of each, at each school, not only indicates the grade level. So a circle is an elementary school, a square is a middle school, and a diamond is a high school. But it also indicates if you use the color coding on the right-hand side, it's talking about just the design capacity of the building. And the definition of design capacity is the, the number of students that were ideally thought of to populate that school. So that is not a consistent number throughout, even, even at each grade level. It definitely changes by grade level, but even some elementary schools will be smaller than others, and middle schools and high schools, they can, they can vary depending on the need at that time or the ed spec at that time. And so what you're seeing here is an interior shape that tells you the percentage of population that's over the ideal design capacity. So usually you want to, the design capacity varies between, a good score, the green score is going to be 0 to 10%. So most buildings can, can support a gradient of that without affecting any programs, without affecting a major operational changes. So there's not, you don't have to kind of have these workarounds, as we call them, to help things, help education move smoothly through that, through the day. And once you start to get above or below that, it does start to affect programs. And so you may have to have some operational changes in your, the number of lunch shifts you have, or how you, you know, you have two gym populations in the same gym space. Maybe sometimes you have to rotate out three, or you have, you know, it's, it's how they, how the administrative team at that school would have to move different programs throughout the day. And once you get below, once you start to really get below, it starts to affect the funding at that school. And so that may affect the type of programs you have, because you may not have enough students to support them. And then once you get over, you start to have so many students that those programs are, you start to lose programs because you just don't have the space for them, you can't house them. And so an over or an under of an ideal population can affect programs, depending on which way you go. So again, that center shape is the design capacity just for the building. And then if you look at the outside shape, if you see no outside shape, then that means there are no portables on site. In the instances where you do see an outside circle, square, diamond, that means there are portables on the site, and they are effectively changing the, the capacity of that site, that facility, moving it into the green or moving it, you know, and, you know, basically it's helping you control that or house that, that population. So that makes sense. It's still a little confusing with all that, but, but ideal, just keeping in mind that the ideal is the green, and then as you move up or down, that's where you get to the fringes.
And then next.
Okay, can I go back? I just, I'm gonna do a visual here, just to make sure that I understand this. So let, let's take Morelands. So it's a, the inner circle is yellow, which I believe means that they are within that plus to.
Yep.
Somewhere between 11 and 20%.
Overcapacity, correct?
Correct.
More students. The, they have portables. It's a green circle around, so with the additional portals, that puts them in that sort of sweet spot of 0 to 10%.
Exactly, exactly.
All right.
On, on the whole site.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a quickie also, please?
Sure.
I, I guess I just wonder of, with the school capacity with existing portables, is that strictly portables that are used to house students or classes as opposed to any portables? I mean, I think some of the portal, portables don't have classes in them.
Correct. But this, the information here shows that, that we're talking about the portable. So for instance, you have, you may have a daycare on site that uses a portable. We are not counting that as a population portable, really looking at just the portable. So they may have, if they, in those instances, we haven't calculated those into the capacity.
It's just.
Those are, those are in addition, that's just in addition.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So next we look at functional performance, and this goes to the idea of our schools being flexible and adaptable. And if there's one thing that we've learned this year, it's how important that is. And Ashley and her team actually went out to each site with a very large criteria. I don't remember how many numbers it was of things that they looked at at each site to just see how the buildings were functioning. And again, some of those older buildings sometimes don't have the same flexibility as some of our newer buildings. So again, it's just one more information point as we look at how we should allocate our funds. This is another way to look at that same information, basically. And you can see the projected capacities, kind of where things rank. And I will say this is all draft. We haven't done an updated analysis over the last couple of months. So we've done some additional infrastructure, particularly at Lockwood. So its condition rating has improved a bit. So you'll see some adjustments in the next few months with this slide. And then we're starting to look now at what are the possibilities? There's a lot of ways that we can look at projects going forward. This is kind of a baseline recommendation. And all of this is very much draft, and it's very much a place for us to start the conversation. And I feel that's why we're here tonight, is we're anxious to hear from you. Last time, Director Hayes mentioned the need to talk about Sorenson Early Childhood Center and some of the capacity things there. So you'll see that we have added that as a possible district-wide project that we could look at. You'll see that we're thinking about these things in kind of buckets of money. One is for the growth projects. And as I think a commenter earlier today talked about, you know, the demographics are not growing everywhere in the district. So we should look at where we're actually adding capacity and where we're just doing major renovations of existing capacity. So we can look at those growths, and then we look at the building improvement projects. And these are those major infrastructures that President Swain had mentioned, whether it's roofs or HVAC systems, major flooring upgrades qualify for this over $1 million list. But these, we've worked very hard with our partners in our maintenance side of the house to look at needed improvements. The other thing to note with this in outdoor learning is Dr. Reed mentioned how great her experience was at Ruby Bridges with their outdoor play space. And this is definitely one thing that a lot of our schools need. So as we're thinking, in the past, we've referred to this bucket as fields, and we're definitely expanding that definition to include outdoor learning. And we're really excited on our committee to have some of our early learning people, some of our special needs folks who are part of the district so that they can be a very active voice for those populations that we serve.
Drew? Before you move, before you move on, can you, I know it's probably buried in the thought process and the, and the graphs and all of that, that, and the thinking that you guys all put into this. But is there a kind of a quality of school capacity measure?
Yeah.
Because like, you know, you look at, just because there's portables that bring the capacity over capacity down, doesn't mean that's, that's a great solution. You know, some of these schools have so many portables, and some of them have. some of these schools have so many portables, and some of them have not very good portables. You know, I want to, we want to make sure we have that incorporated into the thought process of who gets monies. But anyway, if you could explain that, or that's something we need to improve on.
Very much so. President Swain, this slide talks about the functional performance. And this is one that is new with this facility master plan. And so we did look at things as far as the quality of the building, as far as accessibility, as far as really what the students are experiencing day to day and comparing them against each other, right? Using the same criteria for all of our elementary schools as we go through and do that evaluation. So this is, this is the piece that really gets at the heart of that.
And where's the criteria come from? Is it from staff or parents?
So ideally, if we were, if we were doing this in a non COVID environment, we would have gone through a visioning process, we would have ranked what's most important to us. But instead, we literally started this in March of last year. I don't know if you're familiar with March of last year, but it led us down a little bit of a different track. So we had Ashley and her team do research from a lot of different districts about the criteria that they use. We compiled those criteria, then we took it back to our maintenance staff. We did principles, we really tried to do, I call it a technical exercise when it comes to this. So instead of prioritizing, we looked at everything. And as we get to the rubber meets the road with the bond planning task force and what they recommend, we can go through those criteria and we can weight them differently. And that might change some of the scoring that you see here. But basically, we took the, we're going to look at everything through a professional lens against each other. We had the same teams go out to do the evaluation. And so that's the approach we took with the circumstances we were.
Okay, I mean, just personally speaking, I think it would be, I think the board too would maybe like to see like, what that criteria is, especially, I mean, the judgment of the of a functional, quality functioning building is really, I think, needs to come from the staff, not just the principal, but teachers too. So, you know, does the lack of a lunchroom affect my kids, the kids' moods, their ability to refocus once they go back to class, you know, exposure to rain, it just, you know, it'd be, it'd be neat to have focus groups at each one of these schools to give some like real, like tangible educational feedback. And we go to our school visits, you can go to some schools where they're in quality buildings. And it's just the mood and the attitude and the environment that kids and teachers are in makes their education a little bit higher quality. I think, I think it helps. But so to get that feedback and to actually see the input from our end would be great.
The baseline for all of these was also measured against your most current ed spec. So for instance, you have a new ed spec for Ruby Bridges at elementary level, you had put together an ed spec for malt B for middle school, and then with between North Creek and even components of Innovation Lab, we use those because they were, they were really, you want to measure against the interests of your own district. And so since we had those so recent, it was actually pretty easy to go through and use those as a checkmark. But overall, you're looking at your learning environments in themselves for flexibility, adaptability, and support of modern learning techniques. Then you're looking at the configuration between those two, between those types of spaces to make sure the corridors and the circulation and the other program spaces support the appropriate use of those. And then you're looking at your building as a community, an extension of your community and the curriculum or the curriculum and then the community. So how do you, can you utilize these buildings beyond just an educational component? How do you bring the community in and therefore foster better scores and better achievement for your students? But we do have a very detailed list of criteria that we're happy to circulate.
That'd be great. It'd be interesting to see how it's weighted each one of those. Thank you.
And we agree that the more input from teachers, etc., we definitely are interested in updating our plan that we is still draft, like it's not even finished, because we realized that we did this in a less than standard way.
Well, but there's also components of it that definitely did come from the community. The the outdoor play spaces, just again, for anyone that may not be aware, right now and prior to now, replacement of playground equipment has been borne by our PTAs. And that is created in equities across the district, plus the inclusive play spaces that we rightly should have are quite pricey. And so you all have listened and have now included that in our bond work, which is, you know, that so that's just an example of collecting community input and putting it into the plan.
Yes. Thank you. So I'm gonna let, oh, go ahead.
Reed, can I ask a quick question on the slide prior to this one? And the question, thank you. And I'm okay with the answer being it depends. But if you look at the growth list here, it's got a new elementary school, and then several replace and enlarge. Do you have a ballpark feeling? Is it similar in price to build a new school, elementary school, or to replace and enlarge an existing elementary school?
That really depends on the quality of the school that we're talking about and the site we're talking about. If there's capacity at the site, then doing an addition that maybe just touches and connects to an existing building would be way more cost effective than if we're having to tear down part of the building and go vertical, because the site capacity doesn't allow for it. So that is very much a case by case basis. You did point out the Sorenson site, new elementary school, and I want to caveat that. I don't think we're thinking of an entirely new school there necessarily. What we've talked about potentially, and again, this is a conversation for the task force and and you all to have, but that's that new 10 acres of property that we purchased, that's very near Sorenson Early Childhood Center. And we were thinking to do some kind of swing site there. So potentially doing some kind of prefab structures that we can get in quickly and potentially swinging elementary schools in and out of that site as we're renovating or doing major renovations to them. So that's not, that's, you know, shorthand to a longer idea there.
Thanks for that clarification, Reed. Appreciate it.
If I could have a question on this slide, too. So in in many cases, at least, you know, that I've seen over the last 10 years or so, when it's when you, there seems to be a historically, I'm trying to think of a way to say this clearly, there's historically been a pretty stark line between a building improvement project, and then a total remodel of a school building, right? And so typically, like Cottage Lake Elementary is a pretty good example. So that was a complete, I mean, it was a modernization, but kind of from the ground up, right, which has pros and cons. I mean, it's perhaps cheaper in some instances to just raise a building and build on the other field and then flip it. But at the same time, not every lot, not every location has that flex space you can do that with. It's, it's maybe more environmentally prudent in order to not have a whole bunch of materials that are just going to go into a landfill, you might be able to, you know, do some smart building improvements that doesn't require you to knock things over. But what got me thinking about this is seeing Englemore on the list of building improvements, as opposed to a complete remodel, because our high schools typically Bothell and Wannabell jumping to mind right away. I mean, they were phased, they weren't all done at once, but it was pretty much a knockdown rebuild. But I, and Englemore is an older building, and I see it under building improvements. I'm wondering if maybe the line is shifting a little bit, or what's your thoughts there?
I want to do a little bit of a paused part of that question. We're going to show you kind of in the next few slides, a baseline idea, and then an idea if we do a middle school adjustment, and then an idea if we do a high school adjustment. So these are just, again, the very, very inkling beginning of a conversation. And certainly, Englemore is the school that was kind of built first, all the other school or built earlier, all the other schools have either been majorly modernized. I'm talking, when I say all the other schools, I mean, comprehensive high schools have either been added to majorly modernized since then. So in some ways, you could look at, it's their turn to maintain equity when you're looking at school to school. And when you look at that functional performance, you see that Englemore definitely scores lower than some of the other comprehensive high schools. So adding all of that together, certainly, the committee and this group could suggest that we want to turn that from a building improvement to a phase one renovation replacement. And we'll show you what the implications of that are in the next couple slides.
Okay. And please, big disclaimer, I know the task force, we asked them to come to help us for a reason. They have work to do. And they'll go through all these questions. But that's, I just, you know, I'm wondering if, and I don't know if it's a bad conversation to have, you know, what do we?
I actually think it's a great conversation. And I think it dovetails on your first point, which is, are we going to raise elementary schools, or are we going to add to them and majorly remodel them? Those two might look different pricewise. And going back to Director Cogan's comment about which is cheaper, when this is when the task force will ask us to look this project versus this project, Ashley and her team will get the architect on the phone and say, what are the pros and cons of this rough ballpark? What are we looking at on these two specific sites?
Can I make one more point on that last slide, Reed? Just to, when we were talking about near term recommendations, this is a 30 year plan. So the near term recommendations are not meant to be one bond cycle. I want to make sure everyone's, that's, that's, that's the basically the first 10 years of your long range plan. And so that's the group of projects that the bond task force would be looking at to then narrow down to the four year bond cycle.
That is helpful. I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. 100% correct. So as you look into this, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Reed, can I just, just, I want to make sure I'm not completely confused about this. In the, in the list of growth projects where it says replace and enlarge, is that where you're talking about just completely, you know, doing away with a school and building a new one and making it bigger?
It depends. It could be an enlargement like we did at Skyview and Canyon Creek, where we added a wing of instructional space alone. And this is a site specific question. And each of the sites will be handled differently. But it goes back to Director Cass's point of, in the past, it looks like you've done this, right? A major modernization equals a total remodel. I do think that conversation needs to be adjusted this year as we're looking at so many competing interests at our elementary school. So there might be a way to spread the money to more places. And certainly, one of the things that we've heard from our volunteers already is several of them are like, it's great to have a brand new Ruby Bridges, but my students at Morelands, and how is that equitable? You know, what does that look like for our students? I certainly heard that at a few city council meetings and other things as I went around to talk about impact fees last year. So that's.
Fair question.
And again, going back to that timeline, that could be in a replace and enlarge over the period of two or three bonds, because typically, that's what North Shore has done in the past with some of their schools. And so that's, that could be a methodology to replace and enlarge, but over several bond cycles.
Yeah. So this is that baseline growth that you just saw. So this is the the visual representation of it from the last slide. And then, in the next one, we look at a high school modification. So this would be if we move Englemore into a higher priority into the near term as opposed to the mere midterm. And then it would move Shelton View and Crystal Springs to that midterm as opposed to the near term cycle. So these are where we're going to start to make decisions, and you'll start to see projects slide. And and to Ashley's point earlier, certainly, Englemore touches many more students than any one of these elementary schools do. And there definitely is pressure on that school. So that might be how we choose to use some of our funds. And then finally, the middle school modification, this is would be where we're looking at a malt B phase two or Leota, look at a major renovation modification of Leota. And again, it just shifts one middle school. I think Ashley's kind of rule of thumb is one high school equals two elementaries. Is that roughly?
Again, in that 10 year increment, right? So yeah.
So what are you using as a, as a measuring stick on, obviously, using, you're using the total cost measures of some sort to slide these back and forth? And so what are you using to do that?
We're using the basis for, you know, districts, your neighboring districts who've recently built schools. And if we looked at phased replacements, we did the, we escalated those because it does cost more to build a new school in phases than it does in, as you know, kind of one fell swoop. We are also looking at, if you're looking at a near term build versus a midterm build, the escalation that would be on that, even if it is all in one phase. So we are looking at construction costs based on what the grade level expectation is, square footage, and then, you know, the type, there's a different type of building is a middle school, a middle school is a different type of building than an elementary is also a different type of school than a high school. So just, and then you also have some very good criteria for what you, the schools that you've built recently. So we have some good cost information on that as well. And we have that very detailed out that can also be distributed.
Thank you. Sorry, but also, you must be using like a maximum cost to make your decisions or make your recommendations. So.
Correct.
Are you basing on last cycle, balance of bond cycles, or?
I'm looking, so the way I'm breaking down your, that you're talking about the overall that kind of chunks of money to get to near, mid, or long term, I am thinking about your bond cycles and what your historical, how much, what the threshold for your bond cycle typically was. And so, for instance, your last one being $275 million, we escalated that up into the 10 year mark to figure out what that amount, so the amount of money that could you, we feel like you could sustain, again, just as a, that's just a really general rule of thumb. And that's how we determined how many schools could go into that 10 year increment, each of the 10 year increments. And so when we're moving them from one, from near to mid to long term, we're shuffling those dollars back and forth based on what your typical bond cycle has been in the past.
Thank you.
Just as a jumping off point.
Gotcha. I think part of the, I mean, just discussions of Dr. Reed and some, some of the other board members have been, just from my perspective, and I haven't been on a bond cycle in the past, but I think that district has tended to focus on a number and then base its decisions on the number, right? And that's, that's plausible and logical. I think part of the, we wanted to have this discussion more in depth earlier, so we could look at, okay, what's the real need? What are the voters, you know, kind of demanding or requesting? And then, and give us the numbers. So if it's $500 million to do everything we really want to do, let's, 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 let's know what it is. So we can start looking at, you know, the priority list, right? We may ask, we may ask for 250 next time around. But if, but I think we want the public to understand what it costs to do what we, we want to do, or what the public wants to do, so that we can have that discussion. Is it 250 or is it 375? And for 375, we can do, we can do, get to three more schools. So I think having those numbers kind of always in the conversation would be very helpful. And not, don't assume that we're going to just stick with the same cycle number as we did last time.
Right. And that was a jumping off point. And then also, you have to consider what can physically be done in that amount of years, and also keep students in seats, right? So you can't, if you, even if you had all the money, can you go through and and rebuild all of those elementary schools in four years? You can't, because you have to keep students in school. So, so looking at kind of logistically, what that would mean, that's why we have a swing space, you know, as one of our first considerations, because there is, and even the choices here, when you start to look at, well, it, you know, if you move one school up, then it moves, for instance, one of the slides show Shelton View moving. And the only reason for that is when you're looking, you have to look at it geographically as well and say, okay, so which schools do go first, is highly dependent upon those data points we were talking about. But it's also, you have to look at the geography and figure out where students, based on feeder patterns, where they can actually, if they did have to be, sites had to move, or even just what the school feasibility is, you know, Dre was talking about, how you have to get the architect on the phone and say, is what we want to do even feasible? Can you flip a site? Can you do it while students are still on site? So there's, there's a whole other set of considerations. It's, it's data plus dollars plus time. It's, it's data plus dollars plus time.
I have another question, but I'll let somebody else speak if they have something. Anyone? Well, well, quick, quickly. So I always go back to Lake Washington as a good example. They, they replaced almost all the, I think every, almost every single school building last, call it maybe 30 years to be conservative. Almost all of those were, they didn't use a swing school. They just built a new school on the playfield or on the soccer field. And then, so you didn't have to move kids out of seats. And I know, I mean, I don't know, we'll be looking to your, um, judgment on how, how many different properties we can do that on. I think it's quite a few, but there's also the ones like Morelands that would be tough to do, right? So I, I want to make sure we don't tunnel vision ourselves into saying we have to build a swing school or a portable farm in order, until we can get to doing what we want to do. But, so any insight on your perspective as we progress through that as, as a possibility of doing that, that'd be great.
The thing that's interesting about the Sorensen site, when you talk about a modular building, it's, um, more than a portable farm. It's more thinking about, you know, as we get into the conversation around early learning, thinking about really those three sites together, even though they don't on the front, um, all connect, in the back, you could have some, um, you could get some conveniences out of parking and fire lanes and, um, drop offs. And even speaking to Doreen Milburn, talking about, um, the benefits, the, the program pieces that she would like to add to her school really could come in partnership with elementary schools. So, you know, the larger spaces that she may not have, um, a high use for throughout the day, but could be partnering with elementary schools. So thinking about some of your sites, um, that are joined, so Leota and, um, Wellington, and thinking about those three sites together. We really looked at those and, and that really, that a lot of times determined what we put in a near, mid or long term, um, uh, suggestion based on, so when you see well, on this slide, when you see Wellington and Leota together moving, it's because it makes the most sense to think of those sites together. And so there's, there's, uh, a lot of, uh, again, convenience that you can get from the economy at scale and just bang for your buck that you can get for this as well.
Thank you.
You know, and I, first of all, this is all great. Thank you so much for bringing this back. Obviously we had a lot on our mind and a lot to talk about, right, and to process. And I know, you know, like with the task force getting rolling, you know, I think, I think President Swain is right. It's helpful for us to get some thoughts to you all, so you know what to ask the task force to start to, to play with. You know, and so I'm, I'm the one that asked for the, the portable list. And so, and this is what I'd love, I don't have an answer to this, but it's obvious we have some, we have portables older than me, which is.
Yes.
Right? And so I think that it gets to the point, I, obviously there's, um, there's an expectation in our state that you never quite have zero portables necessarily. It's, the system is obviously very designed to that you build a new school when you're bursting at the seams. And so, and I, I'm not arguing with that necessarily, but we just have some portables we can't seem to get rid of for our life. And so I just would love you all to kind of bring that up to the task force, you know, and, and use your professional judgment as well. At what point does it just get pointless? Obviously these portables are here to stay, right? Like, and even if it's upgrading them, there's, there's different quality portables, right? And maybe, maybe it's investing and, you know, like you said, you know, talking about the swing space, there's modular and, you know, manufactured things you can bring in. You know, I just would love, um, to get the task force's thoughts on that.
Director Cass, um, we, we as a task force preparers were smiling a little bit at the request this morning because in our Thursday prep meeting for our next meeting next Monday, um, I'm like, we must bring the portable data with us. Um, that's one of the key things we'll talk about, especially as we start to talk about that growth piece, right? And, and what those demographics could lead to and where there's real pressure. And then where there's real pressure, because they have 11 portables on site, right? Like versus a school that might only have one or two, so it's still green. You know, like there's, those greens mean different things if you start to look at how many portables. So.
Yeah, exactly. Like if you need portables for a dozen years to get to green, um, right? And then, um, yeah, yeah. So, so I appreciate that. And I, I appreciate also President Swain's ideas about, um, you know, maybe having a comprehensive strategy, obviously we can't put every school on this next bond. Though if we are at the point, I think it's true from a life cycle perspective, we need to make some definitely near and midterm, you know, plans to, to kind of get this going up. You know, the, the growth is always the, um, the, the, you know, the magic eight ball cast in terms of where growth goes. And we have a gazillion examples of why that's true, but we'll just deal with what the information is we have today and look at some of these older buildings that.
And Director Cass, Dr. Reed has made it abundantly clear to me that this does need to be a conversation with you all. Not so much our bond planning task force goes off and then we bring you something in June and that's how it is. Um, and we do actually have spreadsheets with numbers associated with them to go with every single, um, well, with almost every single, um, slide you've seen here today. So I'll work with Dr. Reed to get you that information and, and make sure that this is an ongoing conversation. Um, and I think, uh, President Swain, you'll see that that information, you'll see the assumptions that we've built in, um, including the escalation that we're using, um, why we're, uh, looking at that. And then where we're coming up kind of with our, our rough numbers for those various buckets in those, um, three different area or those, yeah, four different areas.
That's awesome.
That's great. Thank you.
You guys have got to be tired.
Can I get my second win now?
That's all we have prepared tonight to talk with you with. Um, please continue to ask questions. I'm more than happy to carry on the conversation. Uh, I know Dr. Reed is anxious to have that conversation as well. And I can tell you who's really anxious to have that conversation is that Bond Planning Task Force. We have people on there who have done this before many times or have done it in their own jobs. Uh, we have the Director of Facilities for Sound Transit. We have the COO for the City of Seattle. We have, uh, people who are with the Pugilist Sound Regional Council who are on this looking at growth. So they are asking questions that are about five meetings beyond where we are. So I can assure you that, um, it's a very thoughtful group, uh, that will look at this information and be ready to be a great part, partner with you in that communication.
Thank you so much. Any other parting questions to Director Cogan?
Yeah, maybe another comment. I think it's really going to prove, uh, wise to expand the group to take all comers. When you name the, the various points of view and qualifications and experiences that are, uh, donating their time to help us wrestle with these difficult questions, I think we're all going to be delighted and much better off from the creative ideas that they all come up with. So thank you.
A hundred percent. And let me tell you, the students lead that pack for sure.
Always the case, always the case.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, I too am really excited by the, the makeup and the expansion of, of this group. I think it's, it's going to get, have some really exciting results for us. And thank you to both Dree and Ashley so much for staying so late with us and, and stepping through all the questions.
More than welcome.
Anyone else? Dr. Reed, do you have any comments, questions? You know, you meet with staff all the time, so I'm sure you've asked your questions, but.
Well, I just want to reinforce, um, we've got this work in the right hands. Um, Dree and her team, I think, are committed to authentic conversations and collaboration. And, um, we're really going into this particular cycle, eyes wide open, looking at data in new ways with a large swath of our community. Um, and just really appreciate, uh, that authentic look. Also, I think for our retreat, one of the notes I made is, uh, Dree, maybe you can do a little bit of a demo of kind of the software you're using, maybe your dots or something so that, um, the board understands what we're talking about.
For sure.
Yeah, but it's just, I'm, I'm impressed, you know, it's not just the content of the work, but the process of the work and just your modeling of inclusive ideas. So just looking forward to the continuing conversation.
Dr. Reed, Ashley and Dree, uh, please don't take our, uh, questions or thoughts as like questioning your ability to run this process. A lot of the questions come from just a ignorance of, uh, you know, what you've been up to. We're not there with you every day and, and so I hope you don't take it the wrong way. And especially for me.
Love it.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Especially for Jackie.
Make the process better.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate that. And especially Director McGrudy and I have not been through the process, you know, as a board member. So we'll probably have other, you know, questions that you might roll your eyes, but just be patient, just be patient with us. And, you know, and then our job obviously is to represent the public. Um, and, you know, we do hear from our constituencies, right, around the district. And we just want to make sure that, um, and I know you're already doing this and the task force is going to do a great job just, you know, making sure everything's transparent, everybody has an opportunity to express their thoughts of their child's school and what, you know, what, what needs, might, they might like to see and all that. So thank you for such, uh, great work. I know it's complicated and, and, but we're in good hands. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, thank you again. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the audience for listening in. And, uh, there's.